Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. Today is Monday, March 12, 2018. We'll call this meeting to order. And we'll start with our opening ceremony, which this evening is abbreviated due to the inclement weather today. And Dr. Robert Kirk, one of our members, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we'd like to welcome, and it's deputy, right? Daniel Wilson from Cox Mill Elementary. Thank you for providing security for the meeting. Board members are ready to set the agenda. You'll note that the agenda has been abbreviated to remove the recognitions. When we dismiss early or don't have school on a particular day, we do not ask those students and families to then come out for recognition. So, everything else is the same. We're just have an abbreviated meeting. So, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move, Chair.
Okay, so it's Dr. Kirk and Mr. Harrison. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we will have the approval of minutes. We have the minutes for February 12th, or February 5th work session and the February 12th business meeting. Do you have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, so move.
Second.
February 5th.
And February 12th.
Yeah, no, but one time, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do them at the same time unless there's objections.
5th and 12th, ma'am.
Okay. Dr. Kirk made the motion. Do you have a second?
I now seconded it.
Mr. Schumaker seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And we only have a five-member board here due to illness and out of town. So, we'll have, that's a 5-0 vote, Ms. Monroe. Next, we'll have reports and comments from myself and Dr. Lauter. And I do have a couple of things this evening. First of all, I wanted to just remind the public that the applications for the realignment committee are open until April 8th, just beginning of next month. We already have quite a few submissions. We appreciate those. There will be a smaller group selected. It will only be about 25 to represent across the county. So, unfortunately, everybody cannot participate as an active committee member, but we do want to make sure we have a nice variety that covers all of the areas in the county. And the board will not be selecting those. That is being done by our consultant for the demographic study. Next thing I wanted to mention is that, let me open a file here. I often get a question, and I'm sure other board members get asked this too, about what happens to those educational lottery funds. While the state has reused, repurposed some of those monies, in this year, from July 1st, this is our fiscal year, July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2018, we're anticipating that we will receive $1,754,000. So, just wanted to make the public aware that we do receive lottery money towards construction. And what we have opted to do as a board, we have a standing agreement with the county commissioners who provide the rest of the funding for our construction needs, that we will provide that money, we sign it over to them, to pay on the debt service for our new schools. So, just wanted to provide that little bit of information. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, on Saturday, I thoroughly enjoyed attending the VEX Robotics State Competition that was held at Jam Robinson High School. I know some of the board members went in the morning or during the day. I happened to go in the afternoon, and I saw the end and all the winners and all those things. So, we had three teams that qualified for what they call the World Competition. And that will be held, is it Kentucky, Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Okay. So, it will be held in April in Kentucky. And these three schools have to pay a registration fee by the end of this week. Then, they can raise the money for their travels. So, if anyone is interested in contributing to those, Mount Pleasant Middle, we know is, there's one team from Mount Pleasant Middle School, and their very first year have qualified for Worlds. They received a judges' award for middle school. So, if anybody's interested in contributing, they can write a check directly to Mount Pleasant Middle School. And I understand they're going to have a GoFundMe page set up as well. And I personally will be sharing that through Facebook or other means. So, board members, I would ask, when you see it posted on Mount Pleasant Middle's site, if you would like to share or directly contribute to the school. That's kind of exciting. Robinson High School has two teams that qualified for the Worlds, and they as well need assistance. We don't have confirmation yet if they're going to do a GoFundMe page or how they will handle it. But they, they're an established organization as far as the VEX Robotics Competition, so they have a little bit of money that they've fundraised already. But it would be great if you're inclined to help either Mount Pleasant Middle or Jam Robinson High School. That would be wonderful. So, and that's all I have. Dr. Lauter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to mention that the Budget Committee, the Cabarrus County Schools Budget Committee, has just wrapped up their work. We essentially have about a $300 million budget where we have members of the community, parents, employees within the district coming and working, and also members of our county staff and county commissioners that served on that committee's work. So, very involved process, about four full days of work to get that done. And I just want to say thank you to all the people who participated. Thanks to Ms. Klutz and her staff, who, preparing a $300 million budget so people can participate that, actually takes a lot of, participating in that actually takes a lot of upfront work. So, just want to say how much we appreciate the participation in that and the work that went into that before we bring you a formal budget to the board. Want to say the congratulations to Cox Mill High School's men's basketball team on its second consecutive state championship. The Chargers won a true nail-biter, 65 to 63. It really did come down to the last few seconds of the game over Jacksonville-Northside Saturday night at Reynolds Coliseum and NC State. Just to echo, but not repeat, a little bit from Ms. Furtinbaugh. Also, want to say the congratulations to those three teams that she mentioned with the VEX Robotics Competition. Besides those three winners, it really was a great event with lots of participation from the county. Congressman Hudson came, Representative Linda Johnson was there in the morning, and the State Superintendent Mark Johnson all came and were very supportive and impressed with what they saw on Saturday. Also, want to congratulate Weddington Hills Elementary School for being named the National Magnet School of Excellence by Magnet Schools of America, the National Association for Magnet and Theme-Based Schools. This is a prestigious award that is only given to a select group of magnet schools. And Principal Chastity Dolan will be recognized and receive the merit of award on behalf of the school next month in the organization's national conference in Chicago. Also, congratulations to Royal Oaks Elementary School for being accepted into the A-plus Schools of North Carolina program. This is the longest-running and most successful arts-based school reform models in the country. Currently, there are 56 A-plus schools across the state of North Carolina, and they're part of a network that teaches state standards through multidiscipline collaboration with the arts woven into the learning experience. A-plus Schools of North Carolina is a signature program of the North Carolina Arts Council. And so, we are very excited to crank up Royal Oaks and begin an arts magnet program and had quite a bit of interest for people to sign up to participate in that magnet program. Kindergarten registration for 2018-2019 will be held March 19th through 23rd at all of our elementary schools. Children who are five years old or under before August 31st, 2018, are eligible to register for kindergarten. More information is available on our website at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us. Cabarrus County Schools will be hosting a Parenting Tips Event on Wednesday, March 21st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Winkler Middle School. The presentation will introduce parents to the major types of drugs and addictive behaviors common among today's youth and will provide suggestions for positive parenting techniques that can be used to improve communication and repair broken relationships. Last week, we celebrated National School Social Work Week. Our school's social workers are change agents that serve a vital link between home, school, and our community. They are specially trained to focus on the whole child and to look at factors beyond classroom that influence learning. School's social workers strive every day to reduce barriers to education and improve outcomes for children and families. Cabarrus County Schools appreciates the care, compassion, and professionalism our school's social workers provide each day. And just lastly, a few calendar reminders. Tomorrow, March 13th, is the Staff Development Day. There won't be any school for students. Thursday, March 29th, is the Snow Make-Up Day, so we will have a full day of school. And Friday, March 30th, begins spring break, and I certainly hope that everyone has a safe and enjoyable break.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. Next, we'll move to our Guest Speaker section. In accordance with Board Policy 2310, as revised by the board on May 11th, 2015, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board. Sign-up cards will be available for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the board. Speakers must hand a completed card to the board clerk no later than 6:00 p.m., the normal start time of the regularly scheduled business meeting. So, we have one person who signed up tonight. So, welcome Lisa Guarino. Okay. If you'd like to come up to the mic, and you'll have to press the button to turn it on. There we go. Thank you, Dr. Kirk. And you'll have three minutes.
Okay.
To speak. And we can see a timer from here, but it'll give you a little warning when it's getting close.
In the essence of time, I typed up a little agenda and my speaking points to leave with you, so I believe those were passed out. As a concerned and active parent in the Cabarrus County school system, I'd like to raise my concerns and request your action on two ideas that I have. I've also always worked under the principle that you shouldn't complain unless you can offer a solution as well. So, at first, I'm going to complain, and I use air quotes, and then I'm going to offer my solutions. Over the past few months, there have been many concerning activities affecting our children's safety, and actually too many to go undiscussed. From verbal communications of threats, rumors, and social media pictures, I have been very displeased with the lack of response or inconsistencies from my immediate administration at Cox Mill High School, as well as the lack of information coming from Cabarrus County. I would feel more comfortable as a parent knowing what to expect from my respective school's administration, as well as what is expected from us and our children. I would like to suggest two ideas to help with these matters. The first one would be a community forum at each high school to address the following, and the second one is a safety task force at each school. I've bullet pointed and left this with you for a community forum, including criteria for punishment, why punishment is at the discretion of school administration instead of consistent across schools, how does age affect the crime, what the blackout instructions are so that parents can reinforce those at home with our students and children, why Cabarrus County actions seem to be different than Mecklenburg County, is there a budget for safety implementation, and do children's files follow them from primary to secondary to high school? All of these questions are not only questions of mine, but questions of friends of mine. And I can guarantee you, and I know, Dr. Lauter, you've received emails from me personally, I can guarantee you I'm not the only one concerned. And I believe it's now that it's time to act on these situations. As well as a safety task force for each school, which include members of staff, parents, and resource officers. The leads of those task forces go to countywide meetings with ideas, brainstorm on safety ideas such as new and improved door locks, metal detectors, metal-smelling dogs that are friendly to the schools. After our entrances, how are they protected? As well as safety words that we know the teachers can use when somebody's trying to enter their room. Do we know that that person actually is a safe person to enter the room? Student presentation plan for each school, which would include punishments and examples of inappropriate actions. Our children do not understand the severity of these actions. They don't understand the severity of social media, and we need to educate them on the examples and what is right and wrong. There's also three apps that are available, P3 Tips, as well as Stop It. I would ask that you Google those for more information. There are ways to say something, do something, without having recourse. We had an incident at Cox Mill where we had a fire drill. The children were reprimanded for spreading rumors about a fire drill instead of educating them on what we should be doing for fear of what was going to happen in Florida. I appreciate your time and wish that you consider these. I've listed my information there and would be happy to participate in any of these activities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for sharing, and especially in writing. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And just as a note, the board does not respond to public comments when they're delivered. Staff will look at ideas and whatnot, and we'll have our own thoughts as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, the next item on...
Next item on our agenda is the Approval of the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the March 12th Consent Agenda?
So move, Chair.
Mr. Schumaker and Mr. Harrison? All in favor of approving the Consent Agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes 5-0. And we'll move to the Action Agenda. The first item is 8.01 regarding the E-Rate and the Spectrum Contract. Dr. Probst?
Good evening. Last week, I brought to you a, the new contract from July 1, 2018, to June 30th, 2021, for Spectrum, a savings of $17,000 a month. You were informed that on March 23rd, we need to let the E-Rate folks know that we accept this bid. Want to thank Mr. Schwartz and Ms. Klutz and Ms. Monroe for all their help this week in getting that final contract approved. And I believe you have a copy of it. Any questions?
And then, Ms. Klutz, was this, the Spectrum contract, the one you had to modify? No, it wasn't. It was the paging of the funds or something. Okay.
It was one of the contracts that was out of bounds on the amount.
Correct. The Spectrum one is correct.
Okay. I just thought of that after I said it. It doesn't have the same taxes on it. Okay, board members, any discussion, any follow-up items for this agenda topic? I will take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the E-Rate Form 471 and Spectrum Contract for CCS-wide area network from July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2021, in the amount of $25,392.
Second.
So, Schumaker made the motion, Dr. Kirk made the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes 5-0. Thank you. And next, we will go to the approval of the phone system. You're just going to stay there, right?
Yes. I'm sorry. We'll move to the item 8.02, the Approval of the Phone System, please. Dr. Probst?
Last week, I presented to you the idea of taking the savings from our monthly phone bill, currently around $23,000, moving all the analog systems over to voice-over IP, which will take our monthly bill to $1,800. That savings would be used on a monthly lease payment over the next five years. Our team is extremely excited about being able to update the phones in all of our school system, or all our schools. This is the document that was revised this afternoon. I believe we forgot the tax on the HP side. That total is now $19,359. We have a savings of, more than enough savings to cover this, as well as the savings off the Spectrum contract. So, we believe that we would like to make this motion for a five-year lease on the phone system.
Okay, board members, any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion, and I'll say I can read it here, that the board approve a five-year, 60-month phone lease for the CCS phone system at a total cost of, for the system, with 60-month financing of $1,161,576. Is that the right one? With Fortinet as the telephone vendor and HP Financial as the lessor, as presented. Say a motion?
So move.
Dr. Kirk? And Mr. Harrison? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes 5-0. And next, we'll move to the Approval of the School Paging Systems Phone Lease.
With the additional savings coming off the Spectrum contract, we have 17 schools with annotated, out of warranty, paging systems, and we would like to update those antiquated systems. We will have more than enough savings to cover that. Again, we'll do a five-year lease for those new paging systems. Any discussion, questions, board members?
Okay, I will take a motion that the board approve a five-year, 60-month lease of school paging Systems with KNC Technologies at a total cost for system with 60-month financing of $316,951. Mr. Harrison made the motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Mr. Schumaker? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0.
Ms. Furtinbaugh?
Yes.
I would like, I don't, you don't get to do this often, but there are three people that have worked tirelessly on the redesign of the phone system and the paging, and they're going to be embarrassed, but I would like to recognize Adam Harky, Kevin Crisco, and Harold Hahn. They are the worker bees and the brains behind this. Thank you.
I think we all appreciate the cost savings, because that does take some work. And, Dr. Probst, I actually do have one question. Did you figure out if we can keep the same phone numbers?
On that one, our recommendation is, we can. The FCC will release them, but two years ago, when we started migrating all the analogs, the five schools, over to the voice-over IP, we purchased a block of numbers for build-out for the next 30 years. So, we are in great shape as we add schools with the new convention of the naming system. The principals that have already moved said it took them about 15 minutes to make that change. We no longer...
I'm more worried about the communication with parents.
Yes, they said it was not an issue. And not only that, but we will run those two numbers for a period of six months while we're doing the changeover.
And then, we can retain the retired numbers for future, right?
For future, if we choose.
Okay. Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 8.04, and this is regarding the Wyancoff Elementary property deed and turning it over to the county so they can use it for procurement of additional financing for our schools under construction.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Wyancoff Elementary School property deed to the county from the Board of Education and further approve the lease of Wyancoff Elementary School from the county back to the Board of Education.
I think we have, that's actually incorrect wording. That should be Mount Pleasant, or actually, that's not even, I'm sorry, we need to adjust that. We're not having anything turned back to the board right now. Is that right, Mrs. Klutz?
Yes.
So, we need to strike that, approve the lease returning.
All right, so the lease returning. I withdraw my second. Wait a minute, hold on.
Okay. There was a clause in there for eight years in the future, I believe, to turn it back, but it's not now. See, normally, we do have a swap, but this time, because the old Mount Pleasant Middle School property is being removed from...
There is a lease back on this.
Yeah, a lease back.
There is a lease back on this. It's a... The second document in...
Okay, so that's, that's just referring to the lease. Okay.
There is a lease back.
Okay.
So, the motion's correct.
I see that now. I'm sorry, I was the one confused. I was reading that and thinking, because sometimes we have a swap. Where they swap a property?
So, Madam Chair, I'll continue with my motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Schumaker. Do you want to read the whole thing continuously, Mr. Schumaker?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is to, that the board approve the Wyancoff Elementary School property deed to the county from the Board of Education, and further approve the lease of Wyancoff Elementary School from the county back to the Board of Education.
Okay, so we have Mr. Schumaker making the motion and Dr. Kirk seconding. Is that correct? Okay. And just to explain for the public or anyone here present, the county needs the collateral, if you will, of the properties and our schools are valuable properties. So, they need to build up the collateral that they use to obtain the financing for future schools. So, since Wyancoff has been paid off for a number of years, there is no debt against it, the county can use that as collateral. So, any further discussion? Take a motion to approve, and we have second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0. Okay, and the item nine, and this is really just, it's not a vote item, it's just a discussion. So, when we hired Schwartz and Shaw as our legal counsel, not quite a year ago, we agreed that at the end of one year, we would review, or as we're nearing the one year, review whether we would renew or go out to RFP again. So, what I want to ask from the board is, so staff has time to prepare any information. What would you like to see for your review next month? So, I think that the bills, the financial comparison is probably an obvious one. You agree that's important?
I think we ought to just put our seven-member hat on our head instead of just the five of us here, and do our best to think through what Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Walter would also prefer.
Oh, and they can certainly contribute. But anything that staff may need some time? Dr. Kirk, any other ideas?
I was just trying to find out if, if our current firms, if there were any issues that they were unable or found especially challenging to help us with, since y'all cover so many other school districts. Y'all have the bandwidth, have you had the bandwidth to help us through any sticky wickets that we may not have encountered in the past?
And we don't need to answer that now. I just want to have the questions, and then we can get into discussion. We have the foreboard here for the work session. So, I did ask Dr. Lauter if the cabinet members who deal directly with the attorney's firms could independently make up their pros and cons list. I don't want it collaborative, because I want it to represent the different areas of people who work with the attorneys. So, there may be a very different opinion of, let's say, any property transactions versus handling grievances. So, I want to have those. And what we can do at the end is also, if we renew Schwartz and Shaw, then give them some areas we would like for improvement, so.
Ms. Furtinbaugh, I'd also like us to be a little introspective about how we have managed our contract with our various firms, because we have two of them that we're really dealing with, to see if there's ways that we might improve how we handle the contracts and, or there's some opportunities within ourselves that would help us in being more effective clients to our supplier.
That's a good one. Dr. Lauter, any thoughts on other areas we should include?
No, I don't think so. I think that kind of covers the major points based on us being able to, you know, relay to you guys what, again, pros and cons are. So, I think, I think I'm good.
Yes.
What does our board clerk feel?
I'm sorry?
What does our board clerk feel about the relationship and the working dynamics with Schwartz and Shaw?
Yeah, I think, I don't want an opinion stated tonight. But if Ms. Monroe could provide feedback.
But her, Ms. Monroe's point of view would be very valuable and useful. Just kind of a point of order, has Schwartz and Shaw worked with every division and every department of Cabarrus Schools in this last year? Or are there major sections of the school structure that you haven't had a chance to work with in some kind of regard? I just want to ask, has your involvement been across the whole organization?
Pretty much. Pretty much, yes. I mean, obviously, we're not doing the construction piece, but we still had, you know, plenty of interaction with Tim and his crew on one thing or another.
So, there are gaps in terms of your involvement with segments of the...
The only thing I'd say to that is, because we were transitioning before, there were some things that, in the first couple of months, that we may have even worked with another firm, not the last one or this one. So, it almost takes until around, I'd say, November or December before you kind of get into the rhythm of working with all of it. So, I don't know that I'd say that there's a gap across there, but there certainly would have been some more interaction if there wouldn't have been a transition. So, I think that's pretty normal, but that took a couple of months.
I would concur with that.
Yeah.
And I guess, just for the cabinet folks who are here tonight, so not just the pros and cons maybe, but areas for improvement, kind of what Mr. Schumaker was saying, being somewhat introspective on how can we adjust, change how we're doing business, perhaps get more timely responses, if that's a concern, or manage the billing hours, whatever it is that we could possibly improve upon, so. Okay. And if it's okay with y'all, I'd like those responses to come back to Carolyn and I by way of email, and then she and/or I will work on consolidating. She doesn't know I'm volunteering her for this, but we'll work on consolidating to kind of get a summary for the work session in April. get a summary for the work session in April. So, Mr. Powell, any thoughts to evaluate? Okay, so that is the end of our regular agenda tonight, and that's like record-setting, 30 minutes. So I will call, and staff doesn't mind, do you? I will call for a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the client, attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee to review personnel recommendations. And Mr. Schwartz?
And also to consider confidential student matters pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A1 and 115C-402 and 20 U.S. Code 1232G.
Okay, thank you, sir. So do I have a motion?
So move.
Dr. Kirk made the motion, Mr. Harrison made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 5-0. And thank you to those here present, and those viewing the movie post-fact. Have a good evening. Thank you.